Good morning. Today is the fifteenth day of October. The Board is in session for its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Bailey and myself are present. Commissioner Davidson is absent. Looks like we have a number of people here, guests. I suppose there's a few juvenile members here. I think we'll dispense with this complete roll call. But our clerk will take note of those that are here. Are there any changes to the agenda, Matt?
No, there are not.
Okay, okay. We'll start out with the reason why a lot of you are here. A special recognition, Juvenile Services and Information Technology Highland 2024 Innovation Award. I've asked Commissioner Bailey to read the recognition. Go ahead, sir.
The Highland 2024 Innovation Award. This morning, we are recognizing two outstanding Ada County departments for their award-winning collaboration on a project that helps our community's youth and families. This is collaboration as well as just the award, I think is important here. Ada County IT, in collaboration with Ada County Juvenile Services, have been awarded the Highland 2024 Innovation Award. Highland has an international business footprint and is one of the leading providers of content solutions. Ada County's project beat out two other finalists, the municipality of Queretaro, Mexico, and the University of Texas M.D. Anderson Cancer Center. The shared award for environmental and social impact recognizes the Bridge Youth and Family Resource Center, an innovative and highly successful early intervention program to keep youth out of the juvenile justice and child welfare systems. Working together with Juvenile Services, Ada County IT created a customized solution that streamlines referrals, manages case data, and enhances communication with stakeholders. The Bridge was previously selected as one of six centers from across the United States to participate in the National Assessment Center Association Assessment Center Outreach Reporting Network, or ACORN initiative. This initiative will help define measures to consistently report outcomes and performance indicators that align nationally and across all the centers. Although the Bridge is a newly established resource center, it was chosen in the Advanced Data Capacity category primarily because of the on-base case management system. Congratulations to Ada County IT and Ada County Juvenile Services for working together to create an amazing case management system that delivers positive results to benefit our entire community. Just as addendum to that, as it said here, this was not only national but international competition. And this shows how not only our county works to serve the people of the county, that our departments work together to make that happen, too.
Yes, that was good collaboration. And I guess Amy was in the middle of that, and so was Steve over there. Congratulations. Do you want to take a photo? I mean, I don't know if we got enough room in here for everybody.
Stand on the table.
You stand on the table if you'd like.
We brought everyone, so we would be really crowded.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, let's thank Bishop, because we want to highlight the achievements of Juvenile Services. All right, come on. You never want to question your... How's Amy? Okay, well, let's take back up again. And we have a couple items on unfinished business. We'll have to remove that from the table. I'll accept the motion first.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table, please, sir.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Motion carries. All right, first item of unfinished business from the assessor's office, proposed changes in street name for North McDermott Road and North Riggs Place. Can you go ahead and explain what we're doing here?
So we came back to this after we, I went and talked to the Ada County Sheriff's Dispatch, emergency communications bureau. And they talked to some lieutenants. And Meridian Fire and Boise Fire and stuff replied. And Meridian Fire and the Ada County Sheriff is okay with calling debris route North McDermott Road bypass. Fire, Meridian Fire did drive it, too, before they made their decision. And keeping, so there's no address change, North McDermott Road.
Well, it seemed like it made sense to us when we talked about it previously.
We did have some against ACHD and Boise Fire, but it is Meridian Fire's response area.
Well, and the first responders, that's the one we wanted to find out for sure if they were all okay.
And that's their area, so I took...
First responders, and that's what we found out, and they're fine, so...
And that is Meridian's response area, so they're perfectly fine with that.
Okay, well, I'll accept the motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, as recommended by the staff, the proposed street name change from North Riggs Place, because I have to clarify, that's how it was currently, and that's why we're...
And that's presently, yep.
North Riggs Place to retain North McDermott Road name with no address changes, and to change the bypass realignment of North McDermott Road, which it is now, to North McDermott Road bypass.
No road, just North McDermott bypass.
North McDermott bypass.
All right, I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? Well, as long as the first responders are happy with it, because that's...
Or do we get to talk?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thank you for taking the effort to check with all those people, because it affects eight of us on the road, okay? And hey, we appreciate it. It makes common sense. Again, thank you.
We're all in favor of common sense.
As we need more common sense.
Okay, well, it did make sense to us, and we're glad we got to talk to you.
So our road stays at North McDermott Road.
No change.
Thank you, God. I hope I didn't offend anybody here by saying God.
All right, well, the motion is made and seconded, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
That's right. Okay, we got it.
And thank you to all of you
For your interest in this.
For all your interest, to your help in making this happen
I appreciate it.
The way it needs to be.
Thank you. Are we dismissed?
Well, you can stick around if you'd like.
Do we need a pardon?
You can stick around if you'd like. We've got more business we're going to do.
Excuse me.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have, next up, we have procurement. We have, oh, there's Bob. We have the final ranking and recommendation of RFP 25001, Ada County Landfill Tire Recycling Services, which tabled from 10/1 to today. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the evaluation team for RFP 25001 has completed the evaluation of the sole proposal submitted, and we would like to submit this letter with the evaluation team's recommendations for your consideration.
Did you read the letter?
I'd be happy to. Letter dated October 15, 2024, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP 25001. Dear members of the Board, due to the information submitted in the sole proposal submitted from Tire Reclaim LLC for RFP 25001, the evaluation group determined that the proposal did not meet the objectives of the RFP in diverting tires from the landfill. So it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to reject the sole proposal submitted.
Okay, any questions? All right, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to take the recommendation of the executive, take your team's recommendation to deny the award,
To reject the...
To reject the award for RFP 25001 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. Thank you. Because we don't want to have anybody get a contract. They'll fill the rounder in the contract. Nope. All right, so I guess we'll go out again for a minute.
Yeah, I think the director over at the landfill is going to be taking a look at some different options.
Okay, well, good enough. Good enough. Fall in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. You're welcome. Next, we have the award bid number 25002, Expo Idaho Parking Lot, pavement restoration.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the evaluation team has reviewed the bid submitted for this project and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
Did you read the letter?
You betcha. It's a letter dated October 15, 2024, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 25002. Dear members of the Board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid 25002 to Sunrock Corporation as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $2,120,870.
Okay. Well, they're close by, anyway. Okay, any questions or discussion on the award of this bid? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the evaluation group's recommendation on award of bid number 25002 and award the bid to Sunrock Corporation for $2,120,870.
Yes. I'll second the motion. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thanks, commissioners.
All right, we have a couple of resolutions. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 3025, a resolution granting BMW motorcycles from the Ada County Sheriff's Office to the Wilder Police Department. Any discussion on that, or any issues? All right. Any... Anyone here from Sheriff's Office wants to speak up on this? Couple of BMW motorcycles. All right, if not, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 3025. Call for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 3025 as listed on the agenda.
Second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 3026, a resolution authorizing the track court administrator's office and Juvenile Court Services to accept follow-along contracts necessary to receive payment for county services provided as part of the state of Idaho's behavior health program. Okay? Is there anyone here who wants to speak on this resolution? Okay. I don't hear any. I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 3026 and call for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 3026 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on, we have procurement. Opening of bid number 24036, Stage Two, Arpa County Expo Idaho Park Construction.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Ada County Procurement received four responses for bid 24036, the Stage Two of the Arpa Ada County Expo Idaho Park Construction. Alyssa, has our bonfire procurement system all queued up? If you're ready for us to open?
We're ready. Going in. So this project has been a long time in the making.
It has. Thanks for all your staff, all of them. Josh, everybody, pulling this thing together.
It's almost been two years to the date since we hired Port. We're coming to do our design force.
I thought we had seven bidders, we only had four.
We had six contractors that pre-qualified in this process. This was a two-stage process, the first stage.
Had to pre-qualify, all right.
So of the six, four of them...
Four bid. Four submitted. All right, well, let's see the good news.
So we'll be looking at the base bid this morning. Just to let you know, too, that there's three added of alternates also in this project along with a deductive alternate. And at the county's pleasure, we may, and if we have the funding available, add those, add alternates, or if it comes in over budget, use a deductive alternate to try to get to budget.
Okay. What kind of owner's contingency we have in there?
No owner's contingency.
Okay, let's go.
I'm just going to cross those out, so it doesn't figure into the total.
So we got all the add alternates out of there, and we're just looking at base bid right now?
Yep.
All right. So our first bidder is CM Company Incorporated, and they have a total bid amount for the base bid of $30,719,767. Bidder number two is Engineered Structures Incorporated, and they have a total base bid amount of $35,625,377. Bidder number three, IMCO General Construction, and they have a total bid amount of $35,765,000. And bidder number four, Knife River Corporation, with a total bid amount of $39,206,101. So those are our four bidders, and we'll use a little time to evaluate their bids. And we would like to request that this be tabled for award to the October 22, 2024 Open Business Meeting.
Okay. All right, any questions?
Relatively compact.
Well, there's one that's...
One, one, one's different?
Yeah, fairly close for the size of the project.
When you analyze these, you come back with the add alternative.
Yeah, well, the operations department, parks, and Expo Idaho will have to take a look and see what they can afford on this project, so...
We'll have to see it as well.
Oh, yeah.
You come first.
They'll compile an analysis for you.
All right. Doesn't look like we're not doing deductions.
No, no, I think it looks very good, actually.
And you think you can do it down by twenty seconds?
I should take larger look through and make those analyses and see what we can afford.
All right, well, good. Well, I'll accept the motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table bid 24036 until the October 22 Open Business Meeting.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, good enough. That's a lot of fun stuff up there. Yes, it is. Okay. Now we're going to be opening bid number 24077, Ada County Barber Park EMS and Weed and Pest RTU Replacement, 24.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. On this project, we've received four responses, and Alyssa has our bonfire all queued up. If you're ready for us to proceed.
Go ahead.
So just a little bit about this project, as Alyssa is opening this project up. It's a project contract with contractors to provide all materials and labor for removal and replacement of existing HVAC rooftop units located at three of our county facilities, the Ada County Parks and Waterways Administration Building, the Barber Park Event Center, at the EMS Administration Building, and also at the Ada County Weed, Pest, and Mosquito Bait Facility. Today, we'll be looking for the name of the bidder and the total bid amount, which will include a $50,000 owner's contingency. Okay?
Well, let's open it up.
Waiting for the drum roll. We should have some music played in the interim. Okay, we have our four bidders up there. Our first bidder is Aco Engineered Systems, and they have a total bid amount of $533,973. Bidder number two is American Chiller Service, and they have a total bid amount of $554,597. Bidder number three is RM Mechanical, and they have a total bid amount of $553,583. And bidder number four is TBI Incorporated with a total bid amount of $601,600. So those are our four bidders, and we'll need a little time to take a look at these bids, and we'd like to request that this be tabled for award to the October 22, 2024 Open Business Meeting.
Okay, all right, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table bid 24077 until the October 22, 2024 Business Meeting.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, opening of RFP 25003, Design, Build, Parade Gun Corners Facility Photovoltaic Project.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we received two proposals for this project. Alyssa has our bonfire all queued up. If you're ready for us to open.
Sure, go ahead. Let's open.
So on this project, we're just looking for the name of the two proposers, and then our evaluation team will take a look and see, evaluate their proposals, and we'll... And today, we have our two proposers, our EGT Solar, and our second proposer is Magic Solar. So our evaluation team will need a little time to evaluate these two proposals, and we'd like to request that this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the October 29, 2024 Open Business Meeting.
Okay. So you're going to see if you can perform a little magic.
A little photovoltaic magic.
A little photovoltaic magic. But we need it out there, don't we? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move to table RFP 25003 till the October 29, 2024 Business Meeting.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, commissioners.
Thank you. Get your work cut out for you.
Yes, we got you.
Get your things to go over.
Put some more things on your table.
Yeah. Okay, moving on, we have operations, we have a couple of change orders. Change order number one, Ada County Jail Chiller and Air Hamlet Replacement, Agreement Number 301. Change order number one, Aiden County Jail Chiller and Air handler replacement, agreement number three oh one six one, going to increase it to twenty thousand dollars. Anybody want to talk about that? Go ahead, whatever.
It was just an oversight, it should have been, it was only five thousand dollars, which was not, it would not have been enough, so we increased it by another twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Contingency, this is just for oversights of things that have been missed, or as they're taking things apart and they find things that need to be replaced.
Okay, well, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve change order number one, as listed on the agenda, to the Aiden County Jail Chiller and Handler Replacement, twenty twenty-four, agreement number three zero one six one.
Okay, I'll second a motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up, we have change order number one, Aiden County Jail Potsie Heating Water Loop Repipe, two thousand and twenty-four, agreement number one five six two three, a decrease of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. Any, any discussion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, that's just a decrease of owner's contingency, and then we also found some savings in the project as well, so that increased that amount a little bit for us.
That's great, thank you. Alright, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve change order number one to agreement number one five six two three, Aiden County Jail Potsie Heating Water Loop Repipe, as listed on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have alcohol licenses and catering permits. We have a catering permit, one new license, and one license transfer. I'll accept a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the catering permit, the catering permit, new license permit, and license transfers as listed on the agenda. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay. I'll second a motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up on the agenda, we have the clerk's office.
Hi.
Are you representing clerk's office today?
Congratulations. Thank you. And so I am here because Trent, Katie, and Heath are all at different early voting locations. That kicks off today, the mobile voting unit also kicked off today, and those will both run until November first.
Is Saul joining them?
Yes, yeah, of course, that's a little bit of his job. And some just notes to bring up, we are fully staffed with poll workers at all polling places, which is amazing to hear.
All hundred and ninety-six of them?
Yes.
Great.
And then absentee voting runs until October twenty-fifth, where you can request an absentee ballot. And we've sent out just under sixty thousand absentee ballots, and we've received back about thirty percent of them. So we've seen some great numbers so far.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it from me.
Sixty thousand, wow, that's. Well, it's almost sixty thousand.
Just shy of it.
So I have sixty thousand, then I have till when to apply for an absentee ballot?
So they have till October twenty-fifth to request an absentee.
Twenty-fifth to apply for an absentee ballot, well, glad we have the system that we have, some states don't, are not as, as secure as.
We do, there is also an amazing voter guide available on the website, I highly encourage everyone to check that out. It has some great information, and also recaps everything with early voting as well.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you, anything else you want to share with us?
That's the big thing, other than the remodel going on downstairs, but this is the most pressing one.
Well, that one's making some progress. I had to move my car because it was knocking stuff down on my car.
Oh, no.
Well, they told us about it. But anyway, that'll be done, you got another remodel coming up at the elections office?
Yes, yes, that will be absolutely beautiful and will be amazing for the public as well, really enhancing transparency as well.
Well, we love transparency.
We do.
Alright, well, thank you. Okay, next up is the Claims Journal, I'll accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to authorize payment of the claims on the Claims Journal dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Now we have some personnel actions, two, a certification increase and a merit increase, and, okay, is there any questions or discussion? Here, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Anyone here from the Sessors Office? Must not be a lot of business going on at the Sessors Office.
I'm sorry, Chairman, a BTA started today, so they weren't able to.
Oh, yeah, they got a lot, they got several of those over there, started today. Okay, well, moving on, Treasures Office, and we have our Treasurer with us, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, two matters before you today, the first is the Treasurer's monthly report, Tim Klein will present that, come on, Tim. So this is our, our final monthly report for FY twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley. Yeah, we'll do a quick recap, I brought some copies.
Yeah.
This one.
Thank you. Alright.
So I, I reviewed a little bit, and I thought I'd just kind of point out a few things. If we first go to page six, here we can see the full year, full fiscal year for twenty twenty-four, the interest received and by what source. And we got a total of fourteen million, just under fourteen point five million, fourteen million, four hundred seventy-seven thousand in interest. And then you can see the various sources of those. When we originally came up with the projections, and we, we do that in, we did this projection for FY twenty-four in March of twenty twenty-three, so fully six months prior to the fiscal year beginning, and eighteen months prior to the fiscal year ending. And at that time, we had estimated interest of eight point nine six six, so just under nine million. So we exceeded what we had forecast for, which is good. And of course, that was a result of the Fed holding interest rates as high as they did for as long as they did. And so now we see, we have a little bit of a change. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which we came up with those calculations around the same time, March of twenty twenty-four, we projected for this year that we're currently, currently in and will end next September, eleven point six million. So we were pretty far off on our estimate for twenty twenty-four. Of course, we know what our investments are currently paying, and so that's easy, the hard part is knowing what the Fed's gonna do. And so, looking at the Fed dot plot or the summary of economic projections as part of the calculation we come up with, that's where we got the eleven point six million for twenty twenty-five. I, I think that we'll be closer in that projection than we were with this one, but, but this one is a pleasant surprise on the upside for the county. Now, also, if you just move to page eleven, this shows our, our current investments, it's, it's easy to see these pie charts, so that's why we include this, it's nice to look at this. Now, you don't have last month's report, but I did bring that, this page here from last month, and I just want to kind of point out that the cash portion, that's sort of that pinkish color. Last month, it was fifteen point five percent cash, and we moved ten million out in September. And so, the reason we're doing that is because, as you know, the Fed met, and on September the eighteenth, they lowered by fifty basis points. And so we took it out of a money market account, and we moved it into our L-GIP, because L-GIP, it's, it's considered cash equivalent for us, because it acts like cash, we can get that money anytime. However, the investments that it's comprised of, they'll go out to like a hundred and eighty days. So, and just to illustrate that, I looked at the September versus the August yield on the money market. And so in August, our yield on our money market was five point two two, and in September, it had dropped to four point eight six. And so, and, and that was, you know, after the Fed didn't lower the rates until the eighteenth, so twelve days, you saw a big, big drop. And so money market yields react quickly, as soon as the, the Fed makes a move, they, they drop quickly, and anticipating that, we've kind of moved some out of cash, we had at one time seventy million in that money market account. And we benefited with that, because it was yielding the most of the investments that we have for, you know, for two years or so. And so now that we're seeing the Fed dropping, and they're likely to continue dropping at least these next couple of months, that's what they're saying, and that's pretty much almost a given unless something major happens. So we're kind of positioning ourselves, and, and the county's in a good position with, we've got plenty of liquidity to cover our costs, our operating expenses, and we're monitoring constantly to make sure we're getting the most yield we can and still provide liquidity and safety. So L-GIP, where we moved that money, the ten million, in August, it was, the yield was five point one nine, and in September, it was five point one five, so it's a very, very small movement. Eventually, because it, it has most of its investments a hundred and eighty days or less, it'll begin to fall off, but not as rapidly as the money market. So I wanted to kind of point that out. And then finally, actually, let's go back one page to, to page, page ten, and just wanted to point out the, the new purchases for the month, they're listed here. And so I had mentioned in the past, we get about a million dollars a month that comes in on our mortgage-backed securities. We have one maturity, actually tomorrow, for two million dollars, and it'll also give us our final coupon payment, which was fifteen thousand. And we currently have about one point three million sitting in our cash money market account. So that's gonna give us a total tomorrow about three point three million, which will redeploy into, you know, another investment. So we're constantly monitoring this, we did better than we expected, and so that's good for the county, and we'll likely see a drop, you know, going forward into this next fiscal year.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
The figure we used in our budget that we adopted was what in terms of our projection, was that the?
Eleven point six.
Eleven point six.
Yeah, we, we looked at three different scenarios, and this was, this was sort of the middle of the road. We looked at one that's like a worst-case scenario where, you know, something major happens and, and rates go down to one percent, which is highly, highly unlikely. And then this was based on the summary of economic projections that come out quarterly, and they forecast those out through the end of our next fiscal year. And so we looked at each of those, and then I think they have eighteen Fed governors that kind of target it, and it looks like a dot plot, that's why it's called it. We kind of find the middle ground and try to get a consensus of where it might be based on those projections. And so once we plug that into our variable money markets and, and the L-GIP, we come up with a calculation, and, and that's telling us eleven point six, provided they follow what their dot plot says, which, you know, who knows?
Who knows for sure, your crystal balls, buried.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright.
Thank you for, for the job you did.
Yeah.
For the county and for the public.
Yeah. So we're a little over on our, what, what budget for, for this next fiscal year, so let's start out, go ahead. Yeah. Okay, moving on, we, we have, we have a tax deeds auction.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, so we conducted an auction in September, these were for properties that the county acquired by tax deed, so we offered them at public auction. And as a result, there were four winning bidders that are listed here. So the request before you is to sign these quitclaim deeds, and if you have any additional questions, Katie can answer those about the specifics of the parcels.
Okay. Yeah, tell us a little bit about the parcels, were they, were they some little slivers of vacant land, or a couple of houses, what were they?
And how, and how, was it a dynamic bidding process?
It was dynamic, it was a bidding process that lasted three full days. We did have one property that was redeemed, so we didn't sell that property, and then one property didn't receive any bids. If you remember, it was a little tiny triangle on Glenwood and between the train tracks. But the rest of these properties, one is the mobile home and land, and the rest is just land.
Which one's the mobile home and land?
The mobile home is, um, the second property listed, R one five three nine six zero zero two three zero.
Okay, and the rest of them is bare land?
Yes.
Okay. Well, any questions?
In, in the bidding process, you said it was dynamic, so did, did the competition yield increased numbers or?
It did, yes, so we did have excess proceeds from all these properties, ranging from twenty-nine hundred to one hundred and one thousand.
And, and explain again for the public listening, where does that money go?
We send claim, yep, the excess proceeds, we send claim letters to all legal recorded parties of interest and the prior owners of the properties to submit a claim on that. If there are no claims received, we forward the funds onto the State of Idaho as unclaimed.
But the county doesn't keep it?
It does not.
It never has.
Never has.
Well, good, well, that's clear, because there was a bill passed, said we need to do that, which we were already doing. I thought it was kind of funny, but.
Correct.
That bill that was passed, it, it didn't change anything, because we've already, we've, we've, we've always passed along the excess proceeds to, to the owners.
Yes.
Okay, well, good enough. I guess need a motion then, huh?
I move to approve and sign the quitclaim deeds for parcels number R zero five eight nine eight seven zero zero one three, R one five three nine six zero zero three, zeros two, three zero, S oh four oh nine one one oh four oh zero zero, and S zero five three six one four one nine eight eight.
Okay, I'll second the motion, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have Development Services, Genesee Garden Subdivision. Hello, Richard.
Mr. Chairman, if you give the, yeah, this is a, two lots, residential final plat and southwest Boise. We'll add one more buildable lot to our inventory out there, the application has been reviewed and found that the applicant has complied with all applicable conditions of approval, that the plaque complies with county and state, state law and code, and we recommend that the board authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plat.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application number two zero two three zero zero one six one one eight six S, Genesee Garden Subdivision, and authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Alright, now we have the approval of minutes for the jail inspection and for the Open Business Meeting on ten eight, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the amendments of jail inspection for nine sixteen twenty-four, Open Business Meeting ten eight twenty twenty-four, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Alright, we have four events, Barber Park Education Event Center. I'll accept a motion to approve those events.
I move to approve the interim events, three events as listed on the agenda at Expo Idaho, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we have several agreements to authorize, most of these are renewal agreements, there's forty of them. Any question or discussion on any of these agreements? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the Barber Park Education and Event Center, the four events listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Is there any other business need to be brought for the board? Yes.
I think that we need to either, I think you did the motion for Expo Idaho, but I don't think you have a motion for Barber Park Education Event Centers.
That's the one I just, that's the one I just did.
Okay, then, then we need one for the Expo Event Center.
We did both of them, she did both of them.
We did the agreements.
We did the agreements.
We agree on it.
And we did the agreements.
We, we, we haven't done the agreements yet.
Let's do the agreements then, I thought we did, all right.
If we, if we need to make those, I, I, I'll make those again.
I'll make the agreement motion again, apparently, I thought we did.
Anyway, go ahead. Uh, I move to, uh, uh, authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board regarding the agreements, the forty agreements as listed on the agenda.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Anything else we missed?
Did we miss one of those? If we did, we'll go back and do them again, make sure we did it.
Mr. Chair, if I can clarify, I think what I heard is you read the, the original statement, agenda item for Barber.
Yeah.
And then Commissioner Daley made a motion for Expo Events, and then you read the statement for Expo and then started to make a, a motion for Barber Events, I think they were just somehow.
I, I thought I made them both, but. If, if I need to make another one, I'll make it.
I think we're covered.
We're, we're covered.
They both were made.
Maybe in the wrong order, but they were.
Okay, well, we're both boomers, remember that. Okay, I guess, uh, there's any other, is there any other business, uh?
I'll put them all here.
Okay, then we will be adjourned. Thank you, thank you.